These subjects include thousands of employees, well in excess of the statutory three employees, whose interests may be affected, of which I am included. A candidate will participate fairly effectively and in public interest. This disclosure will be reflected in the public records of the clerk of the school board for five years.
Thank you. As a member of the Loudoun County School Board, I make the following disclosure to the school board, against the general public, in connection with the ongoing strength agenda regarding employee salaries, the budget, and our health insurance. And any other discussion that may include or affect salaries, benefits, or LCPS employees.
No.
Specifically, my spouse is an LCPS employee. Neither my spouse or I may have all or any LCPS health insurance. They may be affected by recent changes to employee salaries, the budget, and our health insurance. These subjects include thousands of employees, well in excess of the statutory three employees, whose interests may be affected, of which my spouse and I are included. I can and will participate fairly effectively and in public interest. This disclosure will be reflected in the public records of the clerk of the school board for five years.
First, I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for the invitation to come and have both boards together. We rarely get this opportunity, especially in the last two years. And I'd like to dive right into our budget presentation and pass it over to Dr. Beigler.
We're not going to do that yet. So I want to tell you all the order of how this meeting is going to be conducted and say a few things. We will do the presentation by Dr. Beigler, and then we will come back and just do what's and share the school board. I want to buy two of the opening comments that you'd like to make. And I will make any opening comments that I'd like to make. And then I will turn it over and we will go down and have each district ask questions via the district. And so we do a lead for the district together, chair and supervisor, and then school board member, and so on. I will also say in advance that per the rules of order of the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors, not my rules, but the rules of order by the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors, we don't allow cheering or cheering, clapping, yelling, those types of things in our board meetings. So I'm going to ask that everyone respects the rules of order of the board of supervisors while you are in our house, roughly in the jattan. And if you have any issue with that, well, I'm just going to assume no one will have an issue with that. Dr. Beigler, thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. As I said, after you speak, Mr. Moore should speak. I will speak, and then we will put the questions over to you, sir.
Thank you, Chair Randall, Chair Moore. Excited to be here this evening to present this budget on behalf of the Loudoun County School Board. The budget that I'm presenting tonight was adopted by the school board officially on February 2nd, 2022. And it is a budget that is forward-thinking, fiscally responsible, and most importantly, focused on excellence for students. First area I'd like to focus on is educational excellence. Loudoun County Public Schools is a school division of excellence. And you can see here on this slide a few ways in which that excellence is demonstrated. We have a graduation, an on-time graduation rate of ninety-seven point six percent. Last year, Freedom High School, which is the first time in thirty years that I've heard this happening, but Freedom High School graduated, every senior that started on day one, graduated on time with their class. Our SAT scores have gone up by nine points, and they are higher than both the national and the state average. Our students perform better on Virginia SOLs than most of the state. And we had two schools open this year. We had Hobart Elementary School open, Robey High School open, and what was the Douglas School has relocated and become known as the North Star School. The community has a high opinion of Loudoun County Public Schools. We see that ninety-four percent of our elementary students believe their teachers believe in them and expect them to succeed. Ninety percent of our families fear their child's school is welcoming, safe, inclusive, and responsive. Ninety-seven percent of our high school students believe their teachers expect them to succeed. And ninety-one percent of our teachers believe that they can be creative in their approach to controversy. These excellent survey ratings come in a year of hardship, of two years of hardship, where we have adjusted to and made changes based on the pandemic, where Loudoun County Public Schools has been the center of controversy. But we found through all of this, the Loudoun families by and large support their schools. We also get outside recognition. This year, we had two schools that were awarded the Purple Star. The Purple Star is awarded to schools that provide consistent support to military-connected students and their families. LCPS was ranked eighteen on a list of ninety employers with more than five hundred employees in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We were the highest-ranking school division for employees, and other school divisions included Henrico, Fairfax, Chesapeake, Chesterfields, Pennsylvania, Prince William, Virginia Beach, and Albemarle. We had fifty-one of our students who were named National Merit Scholar, National Merit Semi-finalists. And these students were selected from among sixteen thousand students nationwide. Of all the students who took the test, it was one point five million juniors who took the preliminary scholastic aptitude test. And down from that large list, we had fifty-one of our students receive this honor. And our Department of Technology was a twenty-twenty-one innovative award winner. Our students are achieving excellent things as well. We had twenty-two students who were recognized as finalists in the DECA International Career Development Conference. In twenty-twenty-two, we've had seven VHSL athletic team titles, fifteen athletic team titles in twenty-one. And we had a ninety-six percent average attendance since the beginning of the school year. Our graduates have earned over eighty-five million dollars in scholarships. The Virginia Department of Education recognizes us as a division of innovation based on the implementation of our project-based learning experiences, performance assessments, and personalized learning, demonstrating our shared commitment to graduate students who are knowledgeable and effective, communicators, collaborators, creators, contributors, and critical thinkers. These are known around Loudoun County Public Schools as the five Cs or the profile of a graduate. With all of the great things that are happening in Loudoun County, we do realize where there are places where we can improve. Our literacy data shows that our students are having trouble reading. This year, our number of failures on the PALS test topped twenty-seven percent. This was during the height of the pandemic, but we also noticed significant gaps based on race, IEP status.
Demonstrating our shared commitment to graduate students who are knowledgeable and effective, communicators, collaborators, creators, contributors, and critical thinkers. These are known around Loudoun County Public Schools as the five Cs or the profile of a graduate. With all of the great things that are happening in Loudoun County, we do realize where there are places where we can improve. Our literacy data shows that our students are having trouble reading. This year, our number of failures on the PALS test topped twenty-seven percent. This was during the height of the pandemic, but we also noticed significant gaps based on race, IEP status, socioeconomic status. This budget includes funds to correct this shortcoming, including elementary specialists who will lead programmatic changes to our literacy program. We know that we need to do some work in the area of English language learners, that we need to increase rigor and focus on core subjects and their connectedness to language. We need to encourage the use of higher-order analytical skills and move away from a focus on vocabulary, pronunciation, grammar, and move toward the most generative aspects of language, how it works, how it connects to meaning, and how to use it to perform analysis. This budget includes sixteen teachers to enhance the staffing standards and recognize the needs of duly identified English language learners. We also are looking at program enhancement. And this includes moving toward programs that provide greater opportunity for our students around the division. Currently in Loudoun County, we have one marquee program, that's at the Academy of Loudons. It is very popular and very successful, but it is also very crowded. And so the board has undertaken policy and regulation work in order to set up interest and career academies across the division. We are in the second year in FY twenty-three of becoming an IB program, an international baccalaureate program, which we anticipate starting at two high school sites. We also anticipate bringing Elementary World Language Study back to the elementary schools. And we will be looking toward the future by surveying our students and our families for future expansion of career and interest academies at the high school and middle school levels. This budget is fiscally responsible. Loudoun County Public Schools, according to the Washington Area Board of Education, still has one of the lowest costs per pupil at eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine. It's still one of the lowest costs per pupil of the Washington area. We're proud that we have one of the highest percentages of personnel that are dedicated to the classroom, ninety-two point three percent. This budget includes thirty-five point six million dollars in enrollment-driven reductions. And this is part of our efforts to right-size our division, even though we are projecting modest growth for year-over-year when we move into FY twenty-three. And we are looking to increase efficiencies in our transportation department that will allow us to reduce the number of FTEs needed in transportation by forty-five. As we get into the budget summary, this slide summarizes all of our funds that we have. And of course, the one we're concerned most with here tonight is the operating fund. But the school division has several other funds, including the grant fund, the school nutrition fund, the lease purchase fund, the self-insurance fund, and the capital improvement and projects fund. And so the total budget of the operating fund is one point four seven eight billion dollars. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. My slide is not updated. I'm sorry, one point five six billion dollars and FTEs of twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-nine. This is a difference from FY twenty-three compared to FY twenty-two. Adopted difference is right at six percent. The school board adopted budget here, again, showing that increase of about six percent in our total revenues. If we look at year-over-year change and looking primarily at the county transfer, we're asking for a county transfer of one point zero eight nine billion dollars, which is an increase of seventy-five point two million dollars from FY twenty-two. And you see there our state and federal revenues and some other miscellaneous fees that are coming out. Expenditures there, which we'll get into detail tonight. Our largest expenditure continues to be personnel and then operating cost and capital outlay. Compared to FY twenty-two, we're reducing the budget by two hundred and six FTEs in total. So when we look at percentages of revenue, this is the percentages of revenue. And the majority of our revenue comes from the county at about sixty-nine percent. And the next largest funder is the state. And you see here, not included on this slide is the federal funding, which amounts to less than one percent as well. The revenue highlights are we have additional state funding to support programs and staff. There is included in the state budget funding for contingency funding based on a five percent average salary increase. And in order to receive that funding, we would have to give the five percent increase. This year, there was also re-bench marking in the state funding formula to offset reductions resulting from reduced enrollment. And this is something that the Commonwealth does every two years. They look at and analyze school division costs across several data points and adjust the state contribution accordingly. And this year, also, the LCI, which is the Local Composite Index, changed, which resulted in an increase of funding from the Commonwealth. And this has helped to offset, but not fully replace, funding losses due to constricting enrollment. This year, we are also looking to further eliminate fees that are placed on students and family by eliminating the parking fees for FY twenty-three. And we're looking at a new way of distributing funds and collecting funds related to athletic events and revenue sharing with our high schools across the school division. When we look at the FY expenditure changes, here are the differences across different categories. And you see that when we look at the budget overall, the percent of the increase going to personnel cost is eighty-nine point five percent of the requested increase goes directly to personnel. We then have operational costs that are increasing due to inflation. And then we have a reduction in cost due to reduction in enrollment for a total budget increase of, again, six percent. And we know that there's often a question of why is the budget going up if enrollment is not increasing by much? And there are several reasons for that. This year, we do expect a health insurance rate increase. We expect an operational cost increase due to inflation. I think the numbers just came in today or very recently for January, where the inflation index was at seven point five percent. This is one of the largest that we've seen in inflation since nineteen eighty-two. Again, our salary increases are in line with state funding, which is contingency funding. We also have a new school opening in FY twenty-three, Elaine Thompson Elementary School. And we're also continuing to see our populations of students requiring additional resources are growing at rates faster than our overall student enrollment. And those two categories are English learners, which we anticipate to grow at four point nine percent, and our students with IEPs, which we project to grow at four point six percent. Overall, we expect our total enrollment to increase modestly. We are anticipating a one point six percent increase in students FY twenty-two compared to FY twenty-three. And there's a lot of talk about our enrollment. And I just want to point out that there is a difference between projected enrollment and actual enrollment. When we look at budgets, we use projections that are an informed estimate of future student enrollment. This past October, staff presented a re-baselining for the FY twenty-three student enrollment projection based upon COVID-era reductions. So we believe we're coming to the board of supervisors with a really improved projection of student enrollment. We believe that over time, enrollment will return to the pre-COVID trend line, but it's going to take several years to do so. In this chart, the dark blue represents the current FY twenty-three projections, previously presented as the low scenario, which we used over at the school board to project, and does not assume a significant increase in homeschool and private school students that have withdrawn from LCPS. The light blue line represents the enrollment projection upon which the FY twenty-two budget was adopted. And again, these are based on enrollment projections, not actual students in seats. So the FY twenty-three baseline, or the new projection, reduces enrollment projections by about six percent. And so we're seeing a big difference in students there. But I want to emphasize that this is a comparison of enrollment projections, not actual students in seats. When we look at actual students in seats in FY twenty-two compared to FY twenty-one, we have an increase so far this year of about one point six percent this year. And we are anticipating that that change will continue moving into FY twenty-three. And here we know that our enrollment-driven positions move in tangent with enrollment. And so this is teachers and bus drivers and other staffing standard allotted positions. And you see here, enrollment is the dotted blue line, and the solid red line is change in budget due to enrollment-driven staffing standards. So this chart starts in FY sixteen because that was the first year that LCPS adopted staffing standards. And you see it includes a reduction in staffing moving into FY twenty-three. We know that we have been rated as one of the top employers in the state of Virginia, and we want to continue that trend. So much of this budget is focused on employee experience. And again, we're leading the way as far as responsible staffing and making sure that most of our employees are student-facing and student-based. Based on WABE numbers, Loudoun County Public Schools has the largest percentage of employees that are with students, ninety-two point five percent that you see here on the slide. That's followed by Fairfax at ninety-two point eight percent, Prince William at ninety point four percent, and Alexandria at ninety point three percent. And so only seven point five percent of our employees are non-school-based, which is another way in which we demonstrate fiscal responsibility in the development of the budget. So when we look at cost related to personnel of this budget, twenty-two point one million is going for step increases and one-time top-of-scale payments for all eligible employees. Twenty-one point seven million for teacher salary scale adjustment. Eleven point five million for a three percent cost of living for classified and other scales. Three point five million dollars to continue our market review and stipend reviews. And four point six million for a healthcare premium increase. And here again, state funding in this area includes about thirteen million dollars that is compensation-related, provided that we provide an average of five percent employee raise. Other factors that are related to our employee experience that are related to budget increase is we have an increase in claims. And also, inflation is having an impact on our workers' comp and our Virginia Long-Term Disability Program Fund contributions. We have salary-based changes, and we're finding that we need to expand just by a couple of positions in our HRTD and our business and financial services in order to support employees and provide analytics. We're also looking at an investment in sustained excellence. This budget, with staffing standards appropriately applied, is adopted and will project, with enrollment results, a reduction of four hundred and three point five five FTEs for a savings of thirty-five point five million. The numbers are different than those earlier in the slide. Which one is correct? This one? Okay. And that's a little bit different from a slide that was earlier. So this is the correct number. I think the other one was just related to teachers. So a total of four hundred and three FTEs reduction. And we believe we're going to be able to do this without a reduction in force through attrition and reassignment. And you see here the categories where those positions will come from. We do know that we have forty FTEs that will be assigned to our new school that is opening in the fall. And that is about three point seven million dollars that will go to opening Elaine E. Thompson Elementary School. We also have expenses that are needed to increase consistency and accountability and also to provide for student safety. So we have about two point two million dollars that's going toward technology. That includes software and hardware support. And esports may seem as a little odd to see on a school board budget, but esports is a growing varsity sport, and kids are getting scholarships for their participation in esports. And we actually have a state championship esports team at Parkview High School. We have two point one million dollars going to student safety and security with twenty-four additional school security officers and a coordinator and a digital threat monitoring platform. And we have point five million dollars going toward an ombudsman position to help our families navigate and find an advocate in our very large school system and also investing in a communication management tool to allow us to better communicate with our constituencies. We also have some gaps, and this budget is designed to address those gaps. So in student supports, we have eighty-one FTEs for about nine million dollars. And that includes, I'm sorry, ninety, oh, sorry, ninety FTEs, which includes about twelve point four million dollars. This is for seventeen full-time substitutes. And we are finding, and it's not a surprise, it's in the news often, that schools are having a hard time staffing substitute teachers. It's related to a lot of things, low unemployment, an increase in the gig economy and flexibility that can be provided to employees who wish to work part-time. So we're looking to add seventeen full-time subs as part of a multi-year enhancement to provide consistency in sub-coverage across the school division. We also include in this budget twenty-three nurses. This is year one of a two-year effort to place a school nurse in every school. Currently, we have nurses in our middle and high schools and our higher-needs elementary schools. And we believe that every health clinic should be staffed with a nurse to provide services to those students. We also look to provide greater accountability and consistency through some administrative support in the area of executive principals, Title IX, extracurricular leadership development, student mental health, and some other areas there. Other gaps that we see that include kind of right-sizing, and I use that phrase a lot, right-sizing our division. So technology support is needed in these areas, division-wide support across several departments. Another assistant division council. We currently have one attorney who handles all of our legal needs that are handled in-house. We believe that we can also find some efficiencies here. So we are looking to reduce the number of bus drivers by forty-five. And we have some funds that need to move around because we have some positions that were funded by grants that will no longer be funded by grants, but we find value in those programs, and so we'll be moving them to the school operating fund. We're also giving additional fiscal resport to the Loudon Education Foundation. We believe this is an investment in the future. In FY twenty-one, the Loudon Education Foundation raised two point one million dollars for the direct benefit of our teachers and students across Loudoun County Public Schools. And we also are looking to have, let me turn it on. Adding for consistency and accountability, we also have a start of a new office of the Auditor General. Ongoing operational increases are going to cost about eleven point nine million dollars across our operations and maintenance budget. And this is mainly due to inflation. And as I mentioned, the inflation numbers released recently are about seven point five percent, which is well above the Fed's preferred inflation rate of two percent. And again, a rate of inflation not seen since the early nineteen eighties. And the most important area of the budget is enhancements to student experience and student learning. Here, we're looking at program development. We're looking at program development, forty-six FTEs, about eight point six million dollars, to support new and enhanced programs. And we'll take each one of these one by one. In the area of English learner, English language learner enhancements, we're looking at sixteen FTEs to directly support classroom learning of our English learners. About three FTEs to support the Welcome Center and EL Office. And when we talk about English language learners, the Welcome Center is where newly arriving students go to be placed and to be tested for their English proficiency so they can be properly placed in a learning program. And then we have consulting teachers for preschool students and elementary students. In terms of student mental health, which is a big area of focus for this budget and a great need that we heard from the community throughout the pandemic and throughout the pandemic recovery. And so this budget includes about six hundred thousand dollars to provide twenty-four-seven online therapy for students. This would be a program that the best comparator is something like an employee assistance program. So families could self-refer, or they could be referred with parental permission by a teacher or an administrator or a school counselor, and that therapy would be provided to them at no cost. And to help facilitate these additions, we're looking at bringing in more supports in administration of student mental health and counseling specialists. In terms of extracurricular programming, we have about two point three million dollars to go for performing arts at the middle and high school levels. We know we need to support some of our schools with dry cleaning of their band and theater uniforms. We have moved officials, paying officials for athletic events, to the operating fund, out of the school activity fund. And that also came with a change in revenue, a corresponding change in revenue from gate receipts. And then also a difference in the way we distribute athletic ticket sales so that we don't have a large disparity of funds going to one school and schools with a smaller program or a less successful program are not getting money to replace uniforms and equipment and things like that. Our literacy program is going to be going. Our literacy program is going to be going, undergoing a major change. And to support these changes, we have about six FTEs to roll out the initial stages of the rollout. And we have fifty thousand dollars budgeted for professional development with teachers. And then once the school board adopts a new literacy program, we'll have a purchase in FY twenty-four. In our academic programs, we're looking to increase some support in in those areas with math facilitators, gifted teachers, and learning specialists across a couple of different areas. And that's about one point nine million dollars there. This budget also has funds to start up an international baccalaureate program at two schools, so two school-based FTEs to ramp up that program and start professional learning for the school teams that will host the IB program. And that program will roll out fully in August of twenty twenty-three and will be represented in the FY twenty-four budget. And bringing back to Loudoun County is a program that I'm told was at one time very popular, and that is world language study at the elementary school level. And so we have some, a small dispersment here for one FTE to gather supplies and develop curriculum related to rolling out a world language program across all elementary schools or at center schools. That program is, design is still in development. And so again, as we kind of recap, we are one of the best or one of the most fiscally responsible in our cost per pupil, but we do have a range of costs depending on the schools. And so we know at our smaller schools out in Western Loudoun, it costs a little bit more per pupil to educate our students. And certainly at our Title One and our Title One eligible schools, we spend a little bit more there on our students as well. But all of those average out to a cost of eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-one Want to talk a little bit about how this year's budget developed because there was different, different figures that came over for, to the county manager from the school division that reflected a wide swing in what the county, what we would be requesting as funding from the county. And so our first one that was sent over on August tenth, which was based on last year's FY twenty-two's projected enrollment, again, that was before we rebaselined it, had a projected change in the budget of a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars and a requested county transfer of a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, just over a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. We followed that up in October with a request, with a budget change between thirty-three and thirty-seven million dollars and a county request increase of reduction from one point three million to an increase of about seventy-three point eight million dollars. And this was based on still high-level calculations. But we also used in that the VRS Board recommended rate reduction, which was not included in the governor's budget. And so that expense had to be added back in. And we also had a reduced, a reduction in revenue based on reduced enrollment from the state. Once the governor's budget was in, was incorporated or proposed, it hasn't been adopted yet, but once it was proposed, that incorporated some increases in state revenue and provided for a five percent pay increase, provided the the school division matched those funds. And so that's reflected in the new budget. And then also for our latest request, we had the budget, the departmental budget. So that lands us to what the school board adopted on February second, which is a budget change of eighty-eight point nine million dollars and a county transfer request of seventy-five point two million dollars. And I will point out that the school board, in adopting the budget, reduced the request by four hundred thousand dollars when compared to the superintendent's estimate of needs. Key takeaways from this is, again, it's about an eighty-eight point nine million dollar increase or six, six percent over FY twenty-three, a seventy-five point two million dollar or seven point four percent county transfer request increase. These numbers may change based on final state budget, which will be later in the month of February. And I think there is about a one percent difference between our request and what's needed from the county to fully fund our request. And that concludes our presentation.
Dr. Ziegler, thank you very much. I'm going to ask my, my co-chair, does he have any opening comments before we go? Questions from all of our, of our prospective boards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of comments. First, I want to thank you for inviting us into the snug conference room. I know we're a little close, but we're all wearing masks today. And I assume that's because we're saving a little bit on the heating bill because we're going to do fine tonight. We're going to do fine. LCPS, we have our concerns. It's been extremely challenging two years. And I think the most evident place that we see that issue is in the fact that we have had five hundred, since the beginning of this academic year, five hundred employees have either resigned or retired. We expect that number to go to nine hundred by the end of the year, and five hundred of those are teachers. It is a very difficult environment. Our, our staffs are very challenged, but they're dedicated and they continue to focus on the children. We've had a lot of problems trying to trend our data, and that's because of multiple factors. Last year, the federal government provided COVID funding, which we used in multiple areas to help us maintain the safety of our staff and, and children. But that, that money is now drying up and changes will need to be made because that COVID funding will not continue. At the same time, we have a, a reduction in the enrollment projection. And we've had the disruption all last year of the hybrid and the distance learning models that have changed the dynamic of, of children in the school and out of the school. So it's been a very difficult environment for us to track data through those two years. So I think what we're seeing is, is a point in time where we're going to have to snap the chalk line and begin our trends all over. But when I look at the, the bright side of what we were able to accomplish in this environment, I would point out that our, our counseling departments were so successful that our students achieved eighty-five million dollars in scholarships last year. I'd point out that ninety percent of our budget is focused on salaries and benefits. Ninety percent of the increase is focused on salaries and benefits. And that we have almost the highest percentage of employees, as, as Dr. Ziegler said, in the classroom, in the schools, where it matters the most. I would say that the five percent teacher pay raise is a result of the biennial. So it's over two years and that means, you know, we had to split that from last year and this year. So the funding we put in this year covers the remainder of that five percent. And with that, the expectation is that the, the state will provide their, their matching funds. And that is of benefit to all of our employees. We look at investments in things like the Welcome Center. And one of the questions was asked, why would we need a, a new Welcome Center when we have one at the admin building? Well, perhaps it's because we're seeing one thousand visitors per month at our Welcome Center. It's incredibly busy, incredibly important, and it's welcoming the community into LCPS in ways that we never did before. I would point out that we have two of the five charter schools in the entire state here, and they are both models of success. They're both at maximum capacity with an equal number of students waiting on a, on a, on a waiting list to get into those schools. So as we continue to look at the budget and prioritize, understand that the school board and LCPS has spent a lot of time and effort trying to map out the future of LCPS as we head into our strategic planning, which will be occurring through the rest of the spring and up to the end of the, the school year. And that we anticipate continuing to drive quality education in Loudoun into the future. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Well, a couple of things. First, welcome to the county building. I will say that we have, we are already getting emails, the supervisors that says, that say, fully fund the budget or don't fund the budget. And I should say that tonight is another night that a budget will be funded one way or the other. Tonight is the presentation. We will take up the budget, the first meeting of the budget cycle, and then the last meeting of the budget cycle, which would be March twenty-first. So if you're here because you think a budget will be funded tonight, that won't happen tonight. I should also say that we are getting word that the state may or may not be finished with their budget process by the time we start our budget process. And they may have to go into session, a special session for the budget. And so although there's some estimations I know about what the state's contribution would be, we may not know that yet. I also want to say that I believe that being an educator this, these past two years has been one of the hardest jobs and with so much that has gone on. And you don't probably feel it all the time, and it's not, definitely not said enough. But to educators, I will say, you all are very, very appreciated. I do not believe we can go to the, start the budget process today without reflecting on the budget process from last year. And so after doing some pretty good digging on the LCPS website, I found the reconciliation from last year's budget, and I thought it was very telling and there's some things I wanted to bring to light before we started today's budget process. I want to take your attention first, if you have this package, to page two and the bottom of page two. At the bottom of page two, it talks about the fact that one of our colleagues, my colleague, Ms. Bricksman, made a motion to, to add eight hundred and ten thousand dollars back into the budget so that you could cover athletic fees. I'm going to read from your own budget document, my colleagues. Board of Supervisors can only appropriate county funds. During a BOs work session, LCPS agreed to reduce athletic fees to zero and the BOs would appropriate funding to cover the lost revenue of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. We did that upon the, upon the, upon the motion of Ms. Bricksman. Now, obviously, LCPS, we, I mean, I'm sorry, the BOs does not appropriate the funds. That is true. But Ms. Bricksman and our board were given assurances about how that eight hundred and ten thousand dollar would be used. I understand that you all changed your minds and you have every right to do that. I understand that you realize that there were other fees that your students were going to have to face, and maybe that the appropriating that funds to athletic fees wasn't the right place. You have every right to do that. However, Mrs. Sirokkin, when you all were having that discussion, I went back and watched that tape four times. The attack on Ms. Bricksman saying she has no right to tell us where to spend our money was completely inappropriate since you all agreed that's where it would go. Mrs. Sirokkin did this at you all's reconciliation meeting when Ms. Bricksman nor any supervisor was, was present, thus did not have the chance to respond. Mrs. Sirokkin, I don't say things about people that I don't say to people. You owe her an apology. That's the first thing I'll say. Secondly, I'd like to take you all to page four of this budget document. Page four of the budget document actually is one-time purchases available from year-end funding. The, the amount that we did not fund last year as a board was four, was, was fourteen million dollars. Of that fourteen million dollars, four million five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars was funded out of, and this is again, your own document, current projections of FY twenty-one appropriated unspent fund balances will be sufficient to cover, and then it has all the things that are covered. In other words, LCPS had four million five hundred and seven thousand dollars that had been appropriated in eight, in FY twenty-one that have not been spent and that they used to cover some of that budget gap. I think that's important to say that, that sitting on hand was four and a half million dollars from the previous year. In addition, if you go to the next plate, page, one of the things that was talked about in depth last year during the budget process was whether or not ARPA funds could be used to cover some of the operating funds for the year. I was very clear that I was talking directly to Senator Warner, who told us very clearly that some of that money could be used to cover operating funds. I was, as were almost all the supervisors told, we were just flat-rung about that. As it turns out, we was not, we were not. The Virginia Department of Education gave you guidance that said that there was no stipulation prohibiting and prohibiting using this money. You said it was unexpected and unusual, but we told you all that. And you chose to use seven point seven million dollars of ARPA funds as we knew you could. I say this because the school, the supervisors got landed on last year when we were told that we did not fund your budget. But truthfully, of the fourteen million dollars we didn't fund, you all had twelve point two million dollars of that in your budget. And the remainder of that, we set aside for collective bargaining, if you chose to do collective bargaining, which you chose not to. So I think that as we start this budget season, if there is surplus in your budget, we should know that's starting out. If there is cushion in your budget, we should know that starts, that's starting out. There was four point five million last year and the ARPA funds. We don't have ARPA funds this year. I'm not saying there is, I'm not saying there isn't. I'm saying, before you go out and accuse us of not funding your school budget when we told you you could use ARPA funds and you didn't tell us about four point five million dollars in your budget, I have an issue with that. So let's start today on a new note and be as transparent as we can. If you don't know something, you don't know it. Let's say that. But what we're not going to do is start off as if what happened last year didn't happen. And oh, by the way, we are all sitting right here together right now. Do not wait till you go back to your building when we are not there to land on us. That is absolutely not okay. I respect all of you and my God, I cannot even imagine the year you had. But I will guarantee you this, I will never say things about you that I won't say directly to you. That is just not who I am. So let's start with questions. I'm going to keep you to a clock of three minutes apiece. I'm going to go district by district. I'll start with the Algonkin District, just because it's alphabetically the first district. There's no other reason. I do not care if the supervisor goes first or the school board members goes first, either one's fine with me, but I will go down district by district. I'll go down district by, yes, Sterling would be last, district by district. Ms. Bricksman and Ms. Reeser, you all are up first.
May I have a point of clarification, Madam Chair?
You may.
Is it three minutes per school board member and three minutes?
No, it's three minutes apiece.
Per supervisor?
It's three minutes apiece. You have three minutes, she has three minutes.
Three minutes apiece. Okay. And then are we having one round of questions?
We'll see how we feel.
Okay. And lastly, should our questions be directed toward the chair of the school board or toward Dr. Ziegler?
It should be, it should be directed to LCPS and whichever one of them can answer it can answer it.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I, I will first say that I, I believe the numbers that you gave us are impressive. I'm impressed that we increased our graduation rate, that we increased our SAT scores, that our SOL tests are going up. I think that Loudoun County is a district of excellence in education. I am a firm believer of that. And some of the folks that have been criticizing our schools, I just wonder where you have your children going to school. My children have been, I have been a parent in Loudoun County Public Schools for thirteen years. And I have never once experienced a teacher who would not share with me, a teacher who would not allow me to volunteer or observe in the classroom, an administrator who would not have a conversation with me about just about anything that I had concerns about. So I don't often talk about my personal experiences from the dais because I feel like we all represent probably more than forty thousand people, each of us. And so you can't just make decisions based on your personal experience. But I have years of personal experience with Loudoun County Public Schools. And I think that Loudoun County Public Schools are excellent. So I'll just leave that there. Thank you again for the comments, Madam Chair, on the, on the athletic fees. And I would love to dig into that, but now I only have a minute and a half left. So I do, I do have a couple of questions. Has this- Um, has the school board considered or the administration considered reinstating benefits for our bus drivers so that we can retain our bus drivers?
Ms. Bricksman, most of our bus drivers, if they're in an FTE, they get, they are benefited positions. And they are FTEs at?
I'd say twenty hours per week for bus drivers.
So that's for healthcare, retirement benefits, all the above? Okay, great. Well, then I was misinformed about that. Thank you. I really appreciate that answer. Um, I think Dr. Ziegler, you said that the school board adopted a budget that was slightly less than what you proposed by about four hundred thousand dollars. Where was the trim?
Uh, it was like thirty, it's a net change, so about thirteen positions, motions, about thirteen motions. So it's hard to pinpoint exactly which one of those added up to that.
Okay, and you're, just for clarification, your initial budget had eliminated athletic fees completely?
Yes, my budget eliminated parking and athletic fees.
Because in our boardroom last year, you committed to doing that.
Uh, last year I committed to proposing it to the board in my reconciliation document, which I did.
And then it, they were added back in?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I guess I am out of time. Ms. Reeser.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I've had an ample opportunity to ask the superintendent questions, so I'd be happy to yield my time for the supervisors or yourself to use as you see fit.
Well, thank you. We're not yielding time, but I appreciate that very much. We can do a sec, we can do another round if we need to, though. We can do another, we can, we can, we can do another round if we need, if we need to. Mr. Turner?
It's weird looking at the back of my head. Oh, sorry, thank you. Um, I'm just going to do a quick lightning round here because there's some things that just jumped out at me and I'm not, I just would like some explanation. Um, so was there thirty-five, I'm on page uh fifteen of your presentation. There's thirty-five point five million dollar reduction due to enrollment. That's the loss of the state funding associated with the drop in enrollment. Do I have that correct?
That's an expenditure reduction. It's not a reduction in funding. It's an expenditure reduction.
Okay, got it. And then um thirty-two point nine million is an increase in expenses, correct? Enhancement to impact student learning?
That's correct.
Okay, I added up the individual pieces of the pie with the dollar amounts and I came up with seven point nine million dollar. Can you explain why on the larger slide, there's thirty-two point nine million dollars in enhancements, but all of those programs add up to only seven point nine?
So the presentation this evening is is a high level posi-, it's not a high level. It's it's not as detailed as the budget book. So we will take that as a budget question and provide you with a.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, so from a broad picture, we had a a six percent reduction in enrollment. Am I, did I catch that correctly?
Uh, reduction in, we had a reduction in our enrollment projection uh compared to actual students in seats from FY twenty-two uh or what we projected for FY, I'm sorry, let me back up. See, I, even I get mixed up with those. So our FY twenty-one students in seats in FY twenty-two, we had actual increase, but not as large as the projected. So when we talk about reductions year over year, we're usually looking at projections, a reduction in the projection because our actual students in seats is increasing.
So the, so the, the actual number of students in the LCPS in the school system, fiscal year twenty-two over fiscal year twenty-three, did I get was one point something percent increase?
Where, that's a projected increase of one point six percent from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, yes, sir.
Okay, and that, so did actual bodies increase between twenty-two and twenty-three?
Well, we don't know because twenty-three hasn't started yet, but the increase between twenty-one and twenty-two.
There was an increase?
Yes.
Okay, just an aside. So for all the naes, the sky is falling, the sky is falling, people are bailing out of the Loudoun County School System by the tens of thousands. We actually had a slight increase in the actual bodies in the seats.
That's correct, and we've actually had an increase every month this school year.
Yeah, okay, good. That's, that's kind of the point I wanted to make. Um, how am I doing on time? Okay, really quick. Um, you projected uh that you would need a tran-, I think I have this correctly, that you would need a transfer of fifty million dollars. Instead, you're asking for a transfer of seventy-five million dollars. And in nutshell, can you explain where the delta twenty-five million came from for the increased transfer request?
Yes, that largely came from um differences in the uh the VRS and then the um expense to give a COLA increase to employees.
Okay, and the very last one is, do you anticipate any major change in state funding for the school system from the new administration? Have you heard anything specifically from the new administration? And particularly anything singly out loud in County in particular?
It's a, right now, it's hard to tell, Mr. Turner, and we're not, we're not dodging that question, but there's amendments posing that also that increase revenue and there's amendments posing that um increase expenditures. So it's going to really have to play out what gets adopted in the budget and is presented in the final budget. Right now, it could go either way.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Beatty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to just acknowledge, I think, where Ms. Um, uh, this, again, just going back to Ms. Bricksman, there's a lot of good things that are happening in Loudoun County. Uh, I'll just give a small antidote, you know, a a description. In Prince William County, uh, there was a lot of discussion about Prince William County going down the similar path of Loudoun County and building data centers. And they've been appealing the same sort of, um, how how did they convince Prince William County to to start building data centers? So they came to the Prince William County School Board meeting. Uh, again, they're probably developers, landowners, et cetera. And they've been giving Loudoun County as an example of what they need to aspire Prince William County to become. And how much, you know, the, all the good decisions the supervisors have made for Loudoun County in in becoming where we are today. So I I, it's not me speaking about Loudoun County. The Prince William County folks are talking about how Loudoun County's school systems are are something that they are all aspiring to be. So I just want to just remind, uh, you know, all of us that, you know, the, what, what the superintendent has shared and what sort of, you know, we have, we've been in the news, that's a fact. But there's this tremendous effort, this tremendous work that's being done by the staff, by the teachers, uh, and the students are excelling. Uh, so there, there's a lot of good things that are happening. I'm proud to be, I have two public, I have two children in the public schools, uh, one in high school and middle school, and I'm proud to be a Loudoun County school parent as well. Just, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty, Ms. Beatty, I'm sorry. Mrs. Sorokin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to clarify what was said and was not said dur- about athletic fees during the reconciliation process last year. Uh, as Dr. Ziegler said earlier tonight, he committed to including the reduction in athletic fees during hi- uh, in his proposal to the school board for reconciliation, and he did so. Uh, Chair Sheridan, when she was there, she was very clear that she could speak on, because I went and watched, back and watched the video too. She was very clear that she could only speak on behalf of herself and not on the school board, but that she would support the initiative. So to say that the school board agreed to reduce athletic fees during reconciliation last year is, is that that simply never happened. Uh, what I, what I said during reconciliation, when it got to us, is that um I thought it was more pressing to uh eliminate adv- advanced placement fees, but that I would support reducing it in this year's budget. And I did vote to do so, but I was uh, I was outvoted in the amendment this year by the rest of the board. Uh, beyond that, I have no questions at this time regarding the budget, so I will uh yield or or lose the remainder of my time.
Ms. Glass?
You're not, uh?
There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think I I have um a un- unique viewpoint um as being an LCPS employee as well as a supervisor. Um, I've been an educator for ten years and I have um stepped back a little bit to become a teacher assistant um just because this job is um, it's very important to me. Being an educator is also very important. And it takes a lot of time and effort to be the best that you can be as an educator. Um, and I just want to let all of our educators know in Loudoun County that um, that I think you all are the best. The educators that I've worked with over the years have have um taken their weekends to do work. They make sure that um kids are taken care of. They um, you know, they um support the the families when they can. Our administrators that I've worked with, they make sure that um students know that they are welcomed and um want to support them and let them do, to let them do their best while they're at school. And um just let them know that they um, you know, that just let them shine and be the best that they can be. Um, I I do have a question regarding um on page, page seventeen, uh, was the growth from fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And you have English learners four point, four point nine percent and special education, four point six percent. Um, is that an overlap? So do you have, um, do you separate it out? So you have special education and um and English learners or is it? Um, I think, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, yes, ma'am. Um, so this slide on slide seventeen separates them out into two distinct populations. We do have a smaller population that is also growing. It's not reflected on the side slide of what we call dual, dual identified. And so those are English learners, English language learners that also have an IEP. Um, and we don't, I don't have that number this evening, but we can certainly get you the number of students that are dual identified.
Okay, and I think there was one page you were showing that there was a decrease in educators, um, uh, you know, in the, in the county. Is that going to affect uh the number of educators you have for the classrooms?
Um, the, the number of educators that we are reducing by corresponds to our enrollment. So our actual enrollment is calling for um that many less teachers. So at the elementary school, for instance, it's two hundred and forty-five FTEs. Um, and that's going to correspond to our projected enrollment in elementary schools. So it, it will impact, the answer is yes, but it won't be felt. It's not going to result in larger class sizes. I think that was really your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoiler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to highlight one item that has received a lot of media attention that I did not see in the presentation from Dr. Ziegler. And that was the fact that the board did vote in a very massive overhaul of fine arts stipends to really support educators who put in hour, hundreds of hours of work outside of their contract hours to meet the needs of students, whether that's drama, theater, choir, marching band. And so this was a very big initiative that I'm very happy the board had support for. Uh, that being said, being that this was my first budget season, I have already asked my fair share of questions, and so I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty? I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Kerschner.
Thank you. Um, thanks for being here, everybody, and the school board and um and uh Dr. Ziegler as well. It's no secret where I currently stand concerning our fiscal uh twenty twenty-three operating budget, as evidenced by my comments last night. I'm concerned about higher tax rate, lagging revenue, and increased spending. I'm especially concerned with not only the Loudoun County Public Schools' budget, but how fast and how hard one of the finest school districts in the state's reputation, quite frankly, has fallen. Mr. Ziegler, you have lost my confidence and I'm not alone. I go out of town and when people realize I'm from Loudoun County, they immediately ask about what's happening in our schools. I turn on the TV and our school board is on national news for making bad decisions and mistreating parents and students. I talk to constituents who are beside themselves on a regular basis. Loudoun Schools are in the news for all the wrong reasons. This reflects poorly on our great county, the Commonwealth, and on what was once a school system that was the envy of every jurisdiction throughout the state. Just three failures in this year that I'm going to mention. This administration fired a teacher for exercising his First Amendment's rights. The court had to correct the egregious action. This administration specifically, the Director of Safety and Security issued a memo titled Mask Enforcements to All Loudoun County Public Schools Principals. The amendment suggested bringing charges, which is a, against students who didn't wear masks, which is a twenty-five hundred dollar fine and twelve months in jail. And yet, in a separate memo, Dr. Ziegler, you you deny such a policy. And third, I feel that this administration has failed to protect our students by moving a student charged with sexual assault from one school to another without telling the first victim. I have an email, evidence right here in my packet, that you told the school board about the allegation on May twenty-eighth, and then a few days later denied that sex, sexual assaults were occurring in restrooms. Then Loudoun County Public Schools had a complete breakdown in its Title IX transferring. This second offense could have been avoided if Loudoun County Administration had just used common sense. What's interesting about this, Dr. Ziegler, is that you are listed as the Title IX Director in the documents that I have. The Attorney General mentions they're going to do an investigation. Then Loudoun County Public School immediately says, we're doing an independent investigation. They claim they won't release this, then they claim attorney-client privilege. This is a convenient shield of important information. There are, I have a lot more, but I'm running out of time. Um, findings of failure are not privileged communications. Remedies are not privileged communications. I'm an attorney. I know what privileged communications are. I looked at the statute under two point two three oh seven five. Clearly states you have the discretion to release this information. What I'm basically saying is, how can we trust you with seventy-five million dollar increase when we see constituents failing, failures in management? How do you justify a request of seventy-five million dollars last year?
Mr. Kerschner, your time is up. If we want to do a second round, we can do that, but your time is up. Mr. Beatty?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone, for having here. I want to echo Mr. Hoiler's comments about the funding for the fine arts. I think that's a wonderful addition. That's in the stipend section, uh, the budget. And I think it's, it's a noble pursuit for all of our students. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Letourneau?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, welcome, everybody. I do want to acknowledge we have two new school board members with us. Mr. Hoiler, welcome, and then Mr. Marshall. I can't call you a new school board member, but it's very good to see you again uh and work with you once again. Uh, we, we are in a challenging environment for a lot of reasons, but speaking specifically to our budget this year. Uh, the county administrator proposed a budget to us that is five cents above the equalized tax rate. Um, I have always said I'm certainly not married to the equalized tax rate, but we have wild swings in our assessments this year. Um, single-family homes in particular saw a much larger increase than that. So if you haven't checked your assessments, I, I think you should. Uh, they're up in many cases over six figures. So that means the tax bill is going to be very big, even with the gap that we have. And that means that we do need to give scrutiny to to every part of the budget, certainly not just the schools, but the, on the county side as well. Um, and at least be able to justify to our our constituents why uh that tax bill is going to go up, if it is, at least in my mind. Um, it's always a push and pull with this. Uh, I feel like we come, we listen to the presentation, and then we're sort of told we don't want you to do a line-by-line analysis of our budget, to which I say then, why am I even seeing it? You know, I I don't want to just give you a number. I want to base it, my, my decision-making on something, so I try to do that. So with that in mind, I do have a couple of questions. Um, I'll sort of get them all out and then maybe we can hopefully get, get some answers. Um, on the personnel cost, there's, there's three different pu-, well, I guess three different buckets of increases. There's a twenty-two million for step increases and the one-time top-of-scale payments, twenty-one point seven for teacher salary scale, and then a three percent COLA. So I'm just trying to figure out exactly what that all equates to, um, what percentages that is, sort of who gets what in that. So if you can give me a high-level answer, that's great. Obviously, we can submit these as well. Uh, my other two questions, as it relates to foreign language, um, I'm just sort of curious why sort of the focus on the elementary language? Um, I also, like Super supervisor Bricksman, don't like to bring my own personal experience into things, but um, the middle school language program is essentially a high school program. You, you, as middle schoolers, you take high school-level courses. It's not a specifically designed middle school curriculum. And so I just wondered if there was any thought to sort of starting with that and perhaps designing a curriculum that was appropriate for that age group specifically, as opposed to just going right to elementary school. Um, and then the third question I had was frankly about the collective bargaining positions. Um, so I think we've been through this process and I'm not, not going to get into my opinion about it. But it was very clear from our county administration that if we were to engage in collective bargaining, we need to have positions uh on the, on the county side to help administer that. So I saw that this request took those positions out, and I'm trying to sort of interpret. So I saw that this request took those positions out, and I'm trying to sort of interpret what that means, whether that means there won't be collective bargaining. I frankly wouldn't want you to have a budget without that, if you have collective bargaining. So those are my three questions.
Thank you. Mr. Ziegler, you want to hold all your answers until the end, or you want to go and answer him right now? Either way, it's fine with me.
Took them all down, this budget question, to Madam Chair. He did them rapid-fire, and, and I don't think I could accurately answer them. So I don't want to try to guess and remember what he said. We'll take them as budget questions.
Dr. Ziegler, before I go to a second round of questions, which is not time yet, if there is anything that you want to answer any one's statements, I'll, I'll let you do that, and then we'll go to the second round of questions, if that's needed, okay? All right, so then we would go next to, because Mr. Morris is going to go right before I do. We'll go next to Ms. Umstead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Dr. Ziegler, I know you are in a tough position. The whole school board is in a tough position. I'm only going to make one comment that might be deemed interfering in, in how the school system runs. That is simply a request that you, and I know you're a person of compassion, but that you and, and all the school board recognize that children get caught in the middle of these battles. And it is, in my opinion, unfair to discipline them in any way if the only thing they're doing is not wearing a mask. They tend to echo the sentiments of their parents. And I don't think they should be suspended because contrary to the practice of the school system, even though the schools don't report suspensions to colleges, the colleges ask the students who apply whether they've been suspended. If the student says yes, the child does not get into college. And if the student says no and is not being truthful, and it later comes out, the, the child is thrown out of the college. So these disciplinary decisions do have lasting impacts. Having said that, I do want to stress, I think you are trying your hardest, all of you, to do a good job for as many children as you can. And so I'd ask about the mental health programs. Are you seeing, I assume you are seeing significant mental health issues because we're seeing it, especially among younger generations across the country, across the board? And are you seeing special problems based on where children might live, whether they are special needs children, whether they come from impoverished backgrounds, whether they are the children of immigrants? And can we address all of those issues if you see differences among them? And it's a pretty broad question, so if you could just take it under consideration as you go forward, I'd deeply appreciate it. But thank you very much for, for putting up with all of us.
Mr. Marshall.
Is it on?
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much. I just want to say that I am a retired personnel. Basically, I'm not working. As you see, for my age, I'm not young anymore. My house is worth a lot more money than I had thought it would be worth, and I'm paying those taxes. So believe me, I empathize with the position you're in because no matter what you do, you're going to be criticized for higher taxes. I do want to say that education and educators are people who want to serve, want to serve students. And in doing so, we have now come across an increase in more needy situations. Examples, for instance, our economically disadvantaged students have increased. Our special education students have increased. Our English, language learner students have increased. And as Ms. Umstead has already mentioned, there is mental health problems that we are trying to address. All of that, with the realization that we live in a competitive society, we have to keep our salaries competitive. We have to attract the best teachers we can for our students. And even though the seventy-five-million-dollar deficit in, between the two boards is there, we have definite needs that we're trying to meet. And I apologize for the fact that we've put you in this bind, but we do, we ask, this is our needs-based budget, and I wish you would consider it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair's sentence.
All right, thank you. And, well, I have a couple, well, two questions. One is, on your PowerPoint, page number forty-one, you have Title I, you have eight schools, and you have Title I eligible twelve schools. What is the difference?
So that is based on percentage of students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. So it's a socioeconomic indicator. And for our Title I schools, we use... For our Title I schools, we use fifty percent. And for our Title I eligible schools, we use thirty-five percent.
So you're saying we have some schools that technically are eligible to be labeled as Title I, but for, for various, whatever reason, we choose not to actually list them as Title I?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
So are you saying we actually have some schools, I guess these twelve here, that say Title I eligible, technically are Title I schools, but we choose not to list them as Title I schools?
So Title I eligible schools are, are not Title I schools, but they are, they are targeted for extra support. So that's why you see a difference in the cost per pupil there. And so it's just a designator for us to know that, that those schools get extra support, but not to the level of a Title I school.
Okay, all right. So then the threshold, I guess. Okay, thank you. And the other, well, one second.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my questions in. So recently, before this meeting, I've been kind of bombarded actually from residents in the district regarding renovations for the Parkview High School. So they invited me to come meet with them. So in advance of that meeting, if the, if you guys can prepare this and get me some information, how many renovations have Parkviews been under in the last, say, twenty years? What are the renovations? What were the dollar amounts? Because they, they're having some, they're having some heartburn regarding some of the, the school facilities, pretty much. So if you can give me that information by next week sometime, that'd be greatly appreciated.
We'll take that as a budget question, yeah.
Well, okay, yeah. If you can get it to me by next week, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And the last thing I'll just say is, you know, yeah, we're here, starting our budget season is all, again, another session. It seems like it just, as soon as we get done with one, there goes another one right behind it. So of course, we're going to be having dialogues, we're having emails, going to be having phone calls, having conversations. So I just encourage everybody to, you know, have an open mind, be respectful of each other, and let's be honest with our, our questions and be honest with our responses. And let's have, have a good time with a lot of extra meetings. Thank you.
Ms. Sheridan? Oh, wait a minute. Mr. Mr. Morris, did you want to answer his question?
I did want to provide some, some insight. Title I, we are limited by the number of schools that we can declare Title I. That's why they're not declared Title I. They are Title I eligible because of the numbers. Ms. Sheridan, can you, can you correct me?
Yeah, I saw you. I saw you, you saw me shaking my head. So I believe the threshold from the federal government is thirty-five percent for free and reduced, and Loudoun County currently has it at fifty percent. So the schools that are funded with Title I funds that we see, receive from the federal government are the ones that are fifty percent above free and reduced. And those that are Title I eligible are those that are in, that fall in between the thirty-five and fifty percent.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
Thank you. I'm going to yield the time so that supervisors can ask more questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
My first comment is that I thought we were here tonight to talk about budget items. And so I would ask the Board of Supervisors, if, if they do have the budget items, please provide those to us. And I would ask that if the Board of Supervisors have other commentary on things not directly related to the budget, that they refrain from the comments tonight, and perhaps we can meet at a different time to talk about their concerns. Additionally, one note was the, Madam Chair, you mentioned the four million dollars that we had at the, at the end of the budget year. That represents point zero-zero-two-seven percent of our budget. And as a, well, it's important because in the federal government, we have something called the Anti-Deficiency Act. It precludes us from spending money we don't have. So when we're down to the point zero-zero-two-seven percent of our budget left at the end of the year, that means that we ran a pretty efficient budget, pretty in line with, with our expectations. So we try to leave some funding in there so that we can carry it over into the next year. And at the same time, that protects us from any anti-deficiency problems. So that, that's all I wanted to pass at this point.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Dr. Ziegler, in answering Mr. Turner's question, you said that you all had an increase this year in enrollment from last year. But isn't it true that your increase was on a decrease that was much larger two years ago? So you had a very large decrease two years ago, and then you had a fairly small increase this year on that, on that decrease from two years ago. So I think that needs to be, needs to be said. And, and I'm not sure if that smaller increase this year are people coming to the system new, are people who have returned to the system who have left two years ago. But the, but the net, the delta over the past two years is a significant decrease. And I, I do believe that that is important to say that. And, and that is what I mean when I say we have to answer questions in their, in their fullness and in their entirety. I have quite a few questions, and I probably need a second round to get them. First of all, on page twenty-three, when we talk about the five-year, year-over-year, Mr. Morris just said that it's on the biennium. But I believe that the biennium was, was finished last year, so the past two years was a two-point-five percent. So if we have another five percent this year, are we starting a new biennium? Or was it, or is it just a flat five percent this year? Because it, it, it can't be both. On page twenty-six, I want to say that Elaine Thompson was my mentor, and I loved her so much. And so I'm so amazed and glad your name in the school after her. On page twenty-seven, the two-point-two-million-dollar in technology, that can't all be for esports. And so can you tell, get back to us and tell us what else that's for? Because it's all for esports. I may have a bit of a...
Someone listed on the slide.
I may have a bit of an issue with that, if it's all for esports. I'm pay, I will. On page twenty, is it twenty-nine? Twenty-nine. Oh. On twenty-nine, I'm very confused by the Loudoun Education Foundation funding. I was under the impression that Loudoun Education Foundation gave money to the schools. I didn't realize that the schools gave money to the Loudoun Education Foundation. So can you help me understand that and then let me know how those, how those numbers work? On page thirty-eight, I, I gotta tell you, I am so happy about the International Baccalaureate Program coming. I think it's been the one thing Loudoun has been lacking for years and years. I was, I've been talking about that since my kid started kindergarten. He's now out of college. And so I'm thrilled that there's an international baccalaureate program coming. I don't know which two schools. Please let us know two schools. On page thirty-nine, all the studies show that, that, that as a second language, children's, little children's heads are a little bit more malleable. So having those programs in elementary school is actually better than having them in middle or high school. So I'm glad you're doing that. Dr. Ziegler, before we go on to a second round for any supervisor that needs it, because I think probably unsupervised need it, is there anything you'd like to respond to or say before we go to a second round of questions from supervisors?
No, thank you.
Okay. Then I will go to Ms. Brixman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm glad that we started talking about the Title I schools because I just asked that that get added to our joint school board committee for discussion because I've heard for a number of years that we are leaving federal dollars on the table because we use the fifty percent threshold for free and reduced lunch and not the federal threshold of thirty-five percent for free and reduced lunch. So I'll be very interested in, in learning about that. So I, I will dig in just a little bit into the athletic fees versus parking fees because, as everyone probably knows by now, I think that actually any sort of extracurricular fees, whether it's marching band, whether it's fine arts, whether it's theater, and whether it's athletics, all of those fees create inequities. Those fees, when I had two kids in high school, were a hundred and fifty per kid, per sport, per season, okay? So that was three hundred dollars out of the family budget every season if you had two kids playing a sport. We have many, many families in this community who have to decide whether they're going to pay their electricity bill, buy groceries, do a Target run, or spend the three hundred dollars on athletic fees. So I was very appreciative, after talking to my school board colleagues, that the first half of those fees were eliminated. And then I thought we had a commitment to do that last year, and then the eight-hundred-thousand dollars was used for AP fees. Again, I agree, AP fees probably is something that should be eliminated. But again, that wasn't the intention of the eight-hundred-thousand dollars. I would like to get an explanation now as to why those fees were taken back out of the budget, but the elimination of parking fees were left in the budget. Because to me, you're eliminating a fee for families who can actually afford cars and car insurance. So I don't know how that is helping out with inequities. So, and then you said something about you're trying to figure out a centrally-collected way for fees or something like that. So I'd like an explanation on that. And you probably don't have time to do it in forty-five seconds. So if you could do that as a budget question, I would really appreciate it. And it may be something that my, that my board, school board colleagues may have to just send me an email and explain to me why that didn't happen yet again, one more year. The athletic fees are still there for families when we have, you know, you're asking for seventy-some-million more dollars in your budget, and we can't get rid of an eight-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of athletic fees for families to give them some relief. I think that, I, I also wanted to know the purpose of the Internal Auditing General Office. So I see that's in the budget now, and I don't quite understand what that's for. I think it probably sounds like a good idea, but would love to know what it's for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brixman. Mr. Turner? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner. Did the school board members want to, because I thought you all said you were fine. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did pass last time, but there were a few things that I felt our colleagues brought up that were school board motions or school board member initiatives that perhaps the superintendent wouldn't be the right person to answer. So I just jotted down a few things. I did want to echo what you said about foreign language. It's also been, the research I've read is that the elementary age and the elementary level is where it's most crucial. And I did want to say, this is not the old Fless program that we're looking at. So there'll be more information about that forthcoming, but it's, it's not what we had before. I don't believe that's the intention. I also wanted to answer your question about collective bargaining. It is our understanding that last year, the funds were taken out of the approved budget. The Board of Supervisors made a statement about entertaining a potential supplemental request once we had a policy in place, which is similar to the, the localities having to pass an ordinance. We do not have a policy in place yet, so we felt it would be in keeping with your guidance last year to not request that money until a policy had passed the board. So removing the funding was not an intention to signal any decision on a policy. It was just to respect the guidance that you gave us last year, I believe. I don't want to speak for the entire board, but I, I believe that's the rationale. And lastly, I just want to thank my supervisor colleagues who took the time to ask questions about education and about the budget. I think what you're speaking about is reflective of what your priorities are, and I appreciate your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam. Dr. Ziegler, I want to apologize as a supervisor. You have to understand Supervisor Kerschner must fill his President Trump, Governor Yonkin, weaponized political rhetoric inappropriately.
No, 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 no.
My budget question, my budget question is, what was the cause of the two-year drop in enrollment?
The two-year drop in enrollment is largely due to COVID and students withdrawing from school related to COVID.
And is there any consideration going forward? Because we established the metrics the other day, that we would use an eight percent positivity rate and a fifty cases per day, seven-day moving average is the threshold to begin to look at removing our mitigation measures, our COVID mitigation measures. Does your budget for the upcoming year, as projected, anticipate and incorporate the, the removal of mitigation measures? Do you see a cost savings? Do you think there will be additional expenses related to that fairly radical change from pandemic to endemic over the upcoming year?
So with the removal of masks, I proposed metrics to the school board on Tuesday night. It looks like that proposal is largely going to, largely going to be moved as the... as the legislator probably adopts Senate Bill 739 over the weekend, and the governor signs it, which will make mask optional or parent choice across the Commonwealth. As far as costs related to COVID, I don't anticipate any costs. We've done a great job with updating our systems, with providing HEPA air filters across the division. The only way is that we will still have a number of students and staff who choose to wear masks and who choose to follow all the mitigation efforts. And so there may be a small cost for continuing to purchase masks and things like that.
Thank you.
So, as I said, Mr. Turner, you were out of line just then. Dr. Ziegler had a chance to answer Mr. Kirschner. He chose not to. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Mr. Morris. As we're here, we can say anything we want to and ask anything we want to, even though it's a budget presentation. And Mr. Kirschner has a right to say what he thinks he wants to say, and Dr. Ziegler can ask him or not ask him, or answer him or not answer him. And he had every opportunity to do that, and he passed on it. You were out of line.
Madam Chair, I'd like to address why I passed. So it's obvious to me by Mr. Kirschner's prepared statement and by the number of press here that this was a planned ambush. And so to ask me to respond to accusations that attack my character, that attack my integrity, is inappropriate. And I was not given a chance to prepare a response, and nor would a response be necessarily appropriate. Because integrity to me means that when information needs to be kept confidential, it's kept confidential. And if that means I need to continue to be the lightning rod, I will continue to be the lightning rod. But make no mistake, this is not a failing school division. Mr. Kirschner should judge us based on our academic results, based on this forward-thinking and most progressive budget that has been delivered to this Board of Supervisors in many years. This is the first budget that has come with programmatic, with extensions that go beyond building new buildings and hiring new teachers, to turn Loudon County into the type of school division that will continue to attract students and families for the next 50 years. It's unfortunate that we're using hyperbole and masks and the comments of about 200 families to judge the entire school division or to judge my integrity or my performance in this position. So that was an ambush, and that's why I chose not to respond.
Dr. Ziegler, I wasn't questioning why you responded one way or the other. You can respond, you can not respond, you can respond later, you can respond in writing, whatever you want to do, that's up to you. I wasn't even directing that towards you at all. I was directing that toward my colleague. He was out of line. You can respond if you want to or not respond if you want to. That wasn't my response. My statement was not about you, sir. Mr. Mahendey, did you want to say anything? After that, I'm like, no, but you don't, don't you? You're good. Mr. Rockin? Also good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was gonna weigh in on the collective bargaining question, but Ms. Reiser said exactly what, the same position that I would have set on it. With regards, Madam Chair, to your question about the salary increases in the biennium, this is the FY '23 is the first year of the new biennium.
That's what I thought.
So the 5% last year, you were, I remember the discussions, and it was 5% split over two years. In the new biennium, it's 10% split over two years, so it's 5% this year, and 5% the next.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This year, we had virtual Loudon, and we had it for K through 12. And I know that it will, the elementary will not continue for next year. So will, is it in the budget for, from sixth grade to 12th grade for virtual Loudon?
Yes, sixth grade through 12th grade is continued in the budget.
Okay. Could you give me the reason why the school, the public schools decided not to continue with elementary virtual education? I know that there were a number of parents that had contacted my office, and I had directed them to board members if they, you know, they're concerned with continuing virtual school for elementary.
Yes, ma'am. It's a philosophical and pedagogical decision that was made by administration and shared by the school board that the best place for elementary school students to learn is in person, with their teacher and their colleagues and their peers.
Yeah, thank you.
It was a philosophical and a what? What does that mean?
Teaching methods.
Thank you. Well, if you don't know, you ask. Mr. Hoyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have not agreed with every decision that Dr. Ziegler has made over the past. However, I continue to stand behind him. He is our leader. He has my support. And I was very excited when, in his superintendent's proposed estimate of needs, he had a number of line items directly related to lowering the fees for our families, not only the parking but for the athletic. That's something that I have been a major supporter of for all five months that I've been on the board. Like I said, I was very excited to see that those were in the budget. That was something that unfortunately was added back in with a majority of board member votes. My hope is that during reconciliation, we can find that money again to take it out because, as Ms. Bricksman said, it does lead to inequities. And we have a $1.6 billion budget. The fact that we have to charge families more than what their tax dollars are already paying for, to me, is silly. And so, like I said, I'm glad the parking fees were able to stay in the budget. The athletic fees, $800,000 out of a $1.6 billion budget. If we can't find the room for that, then, you know, I don't know what else to say. So that's where I stand on that. Like I said, my hope is that reconciliation, we can swing a vote or two to move back the other way. But I do want to echo what Ms. Bricksman said earlier in regards to the inequities.
Thank you. Mr. Kirschner? You're not on. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I did not call any media. Media showed up on their own over once. Also, there was absolutely no ambush. My comments have been very clear and public for the last couple of weeks. So with that, I don't see any, absolutely any ambush. Following up with the comments, and yes, I did have a prepared statement because I have limited time to get this in. So following up on what I had just, where my time ran out last time, you have the ability to release this information. And I think our budget and how management is operating do tie in one-in-one. I don't understand what's being hidden. And I honestly am concerned that it's liability. And I think a lot of parents, and it's not 250 students or parents, are very concerned about the safety in the schools. And I suspect deep failures in the process. And it's hard for me to justify a $75 million increase when we are seeing constant failures across the board this year. I don't know how to justify $75 million last year and another $75 million this year when the student population has fallen, at least last year, by about 4,000 students, is only up about 1,000. It's not clear to me that we won't be lower again this year because our predictions were so far off last year. Your additional $27 million requested above your original guidance of $48 million will result in a 2.5 cent increase on the tax rate. I just can't support that in a year like this. We would love to have a lot of surplus money, but we just don't have it this year. I cannot support the kind of budget increase until we have more transparency or some sort of change in leadership. My confidence and the confidence of many others, not 250, but thousands, has been lost. This in no way reflects poorly on our hard-working teachers and staff who are committed to our students. They love their schools, they work hard for the kids, and they do a very tough job in a very tough environment. We lost over 900, five of them, this was a revelation to me, that we lost 500 teachers. I'd like to interview some of those teachers on why. Please, listen to your constituents, the parents of students who pay our salaries. Everyone in this room works for our residents, works for homeowners, works for parents, and works for students. But the good news is, we have approximately five weeks before we set the official budget and for Loudon County Public Schools to do the right thing. And that is a level of transparency that does not have to reveal any individual confidences. What were the outcomes? What were the failures? And what are the fixes? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Did you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to speak to Ms. Glass, bringing up the virtual Loudon. That was something I pushed for in the budget as an amendment, to bring it back for the elementary school. I sincerely believe in-person education is the best. But I know and I've heard from many families all across the county that they need some kind of, their family situation requires them to not have their kids in the school for many, usually medical reasons. And for us to not provide that but to provide it at other levels, I think is something that was a mistake. So, and I know that's not to say that in-person isn't what I think pedagogically the best, but I think we should provide something like that for the elementary students. So I'm hoping to find some way to bring that up in the reconciliation if we can make that work.
I guess everybody uses that word in me now. That's cool. I'll start using it. Mr. Letturno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess it's only fitting that we learned, we learned tonight, our meaning of the schools. I get to a couple of questions. Look, the discussion about a lot of these issues has become highly, highly politicized. And I do think a lot of the attacks on the school board have been very fair, knowing kind of the timeline of what happened and what they knew and all that. And so, it's a shame. All of that said, I think all of us as elected officials would not be doing our jobs if we didn't acknowledge that there is still a lot of discord in the community about this. And quite frankly, all I've ever said about this particular controversy regarding the sexual assault case is that I just simply want to know what happened. And if there was a mistake, if it's been corrected. And I don't think those answers have come yet, and I think that is some of the frustration. And I'm not, I understand there's certain things you can't release. So I get all that. We've been in those positions at times too, you know, and now we have another investigation coming from Richmond on this. But I do think there is just kind of this harboring unease in the community about it, and it's not subsiding. And so, I think that's where some of the frustration comes from. But I want to just kind of continue. I appreciate, you know, we submit budget questions, and we get answers from the superintendent, but it doesn't really give you much flavor for what the school board decision was. So going back to the foreign language discussion for a second, I don't at all question that giving children the earliest possible start of foreign languages is more effective. But I guess what I was kind of getting at is, this is only one FTE. It's obviously the very beginning of a program. But have you, you know, we have sort of in my mind, kind of an immediate issue now, which is we have a requirement, well, sort of a requirement, in the high school, middle school level that you take these courses, and we are sort of placing a high school-level curriculum on middle school kids. And a lot of them are sort of failing in that environment. So is that something that's come up? And I was really just asking, you know, it's a matter of priority of when you address things. So has there been any thought to maybe kind of getting at that immediate issue first before expanding into another area? That's really all I was trying to get at with that question. So if anybody can give me some flavor on that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Letturno, can I understand your question?
Sure.
Are you asking, some school divisions offer foreign language exploratories at the middle school, which is a non-credit-bearing class? Are you asking why we don't have that at the middle school?
Yeah, I guess what I'm, so my, from what I have seen, essentially what happens, if you want to take a foreign language in middle school, you're taking a high school-level class. So is there any thought toward a middle school level? And frankly, 30 years ago, when I was in middle school, I had, we had a very specific sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade curriculum for foreign language that prepared you for high school. So we're now kind of just throwing kids into the deep end right off the bat, taking high school language. And I'm just asking if that's been something that's been looked at.
Thank you. You're taking that question back?
We'll take it back, but we have not considered, in addition to the middle school program or an alternative middle school program.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Sains?
Leesberg?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Unstuck. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Ziegler, going back to mental health again. You, I think clearly and probably correctly feel that mental health services to students are more effectively managed by the school system than, say, by the county's mental health program. I assume it's because you feel students have special needs that your mental health specialists are going to be more aware of. Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that's a fair characterization, ma'am. I think what we have is a great need in our youth across the county, and I think there's plenty of work for all of us to do. And so this is an additional option for families and an additional resource for families who are struggling.
And do you feel they will be comfortable taking advantage of this? How will you disseminate the information that this is available?
So it would, once the program is built out, it would go out to our, and it's going to be a third-party provider that provides the therapeutic mental health services. So we will do that by referral, by direct referral, by information campaigns and communication campaigns. Families will be able to make a self-referral. There'll just be a number that they can call. And also, professional school counselors will be able to talk to their families and say, "We have this resource for you. I really highly recommend." And what we have to do now is we have to advise a family to go out into the community, and we can't really provide a resource. We can provide a list, but we can't make appointments. We can't give them a direct connection. This will allow us to give them a direct connection and take out that kind of unknown of what happens when they get out of the schoolroom, but certainly not to supply any services that the county is providing.
And I assume this is just for students, but I would imagine your teachers are probably highly stressed. And I suspect you are, and your other administrators are highly stressed. Does this program offer services to them, or is this completely student-focused?
The program we're proposing in this budget is student-focused, but we already have as an employee benefit for all our employees, full-time and part-time, is access to the Employee Assistance Program, and that is also at no cost and can be a self-referral or can be a supervisor referral.
And finally, I know you're concerned because I think you're anticipating 900 employees gone by the end of the year, and 500 of those will be teachers. Why are we losing them? What is the factor or factors that are driving them out of the school system?
I think there's a lot of factors. We've had to ask teachers to do more. And then what we will do also is analyze the numbers to see if they're higher than our normal hires, anyway. We generally hire between eight and 1,000 personnel every year. And in fact, the last two hiring seasons, over the last two fiscal years, our teachers have largely stuck with us. So this is, it could be because of COVID-related pressures. That's a very good possibility. It could also be that we're returning to our normal pattern of separations because the economy has recovered and people are not so worried about entering into retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall? It was on?
I never can get anything to work. Technology is not one of my strong points. No, I just wanted to say that before I got on the board, when I did get on the board by appointment, which I appreciate that my colleagues are appointing me, I got a congratulations and a condolence at the same time. And I think the reason was, and I think I wrote an article for this in the newspaper, that the behavior of some of the speakers at our board meetings has ripped the veneer off of any kind of decency and humanity. And I was shocked by what I have to listen to day in and day out when we have these board meetings. I think we've got to calm us down. We've got to stop making political jives at people and try to get our work done as collaborators, not as enemies.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I'm gonna get you a new mask. Mr. Sains?
Thank you. A couple of questions here, so again, not looking for answers here tonight if you can't. But one suggestion that you mentioned about doing the International Baccalaureate.
Baccalaureate.
Baccalaureate, thank you. Startup. Yeah, I'm getting my roses out, yes. So, is it my understanding that, and you mentioned two high schools, have you selected those high schools?
We are in the process of selecting those high schools, and we anticipate an announcement to correspond with budget adoption.
Well, hopefully, we have one in the eastern part of the county and one in the western part of the county. That'll be, you know, that'll be highly suggested instead of having them in the same area. That'd be number one. Two, obviously, we just got done with the census and everything. We're going through the process now of doing redistricting and changing our boundaries here a little bit. Is, will the school system be doing any boundary adjustments any time soon?
No major boundary adjustments. We have some minor... We have some minor boundary adjustments. And of course, with the Elaine Thompson boundary, which is, I think, been drawn already, but we don't have any major boundary adjustments coming up.
Okay. And, oh, so this year, it sounds, it looks like, you know, we implemented winter track? Another uh sport for, for, for our students, great. But um, they're outrunning in thirty, twenty-degree weather. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, at one point, you guys were talking about a field house, but I believe that was taken out. If it was taken out, why so? And again, I would highly suggest you look like, look at um working in partnership, LCPS and the, and the board and, and the county to see if we can come up with a field house. Because if we're gonna have to implement winter track, I think our students need to have some good, good quality indoor facilities to do that type of sport instead of them outside running in the cold winter uh weather. And, I don't know if you have a response for that or not?
Uh, not, not a response for that. I do have a response from your question about renovations at, at Parkview, just philosophically, but I don't wanna take your time.
Good. And, you know, if they, I see there was one more, but it skipped me. But, uh, oh, I know the last thing. So I see, yeah, well, you do have a lot of media here today, which is a little unusual for this presentation. We've been doing this for some time now, never seen media like this except for our local paper. So hopefully, when we have our, our other budget work sessions and discussions, our, our new friends will be joining us, joining us for those meetings as well, since I guess it's very, it is very important. So, thank you.
Ms. Sheridan?
Thank you, Chair Randall. I would like to quickly address the Title I question and just reiterate that the federal threshold is thirty-five percent free and reduced. Students who have free, qualify for free and reduced meals. LCPS sets it at fif, a fifty percent threshold because we have eight schools that meet that fifty percent threshold. In fact, there are several of them that are over eighty-five percent. And so that one pot is split amongst those eight schools. We have several resources in place to support the Title I eligible schools, which fall between the thirty-five and fifty percent threshold. And there are no unspent Title I funds just sitting out there, not going anywhere. It, the, the, the pot is split amongst the eight schools, but we have put into place several resources for those that would be eligible under the federal numbers. Um, I just wanna explain my position on fees. I agree that fees are um creating inequities across our county, in our division. And what came to light during our budget discussions were the varying fees across our schools and areas of interest. And so my motion regarding fees included, included an in-depth study to assess fees paid by all students, not just our athletes, so that we can create a plan to eliminate fees across LCPS over time, to eliminate those inequities. My final statement tonight is that Dr. Ziegler's commitment to support student privacy and be the lightning rod for criticism is a perfect demonstration of his integrity and why he continues to have my unwavering support as a LCPS superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Ziegler.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. And Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know people are probably tired of my navyisms, but uh, the one that comes to mind and the one that I use frequently with the school board is that we are, we are an aircraft carrier. And if you, if you've ever seen one, they're a thousand feet long, a thousand forty feet long. Uh, a hundred million tons, I believe. But when you're, when you're driving an aircraft carrier, you don't, you don't drive it fast and you don't turn it hard. Because if you, if it's moving fast and you throw on a rudder, all the aircraft roll off the deck and your aircraft carrier is no longer an aircraft carrier. So we're sitting in a situation right now where people are telling us to take actions, some drastic actions. But the prudent way to approach what we're doing is, is a calm and measured response, which I believe Dr. Ziegler and the school board continue to provide to the situations that have arisen. There, there have been a lot of concerns over the last two years. And we, we have an introspective look at this every day. And we are here to help the, the citizens and the children of Loudoun County. And that's our end focus. There are no conspiracies here. There's no surprise that we are trying to focus on education because that's why we're here. So as we focus on core services, education, literacy, security, mental health, those are the key aspects that we need to be focused on. What we're finding is that we're spending much more time on things of much less importance. And we're not saying that the things that have occurred are unimportant. What we're saying is, the response that we're seeing is not beneficial to the children or the families of Loudoun County. We will continue to do our best as the elected officials, and the cards will fall, fall where they may, but we'll continue to do our best to reflect the values of the community and to protect the children and our employees throughout this, this entire year and throughout the process. And we look forward to working with the Board of Supervisors, those that want to work with us, to make this the, the county that we all wanna live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. So, a person or an organization or an entity is never the sum total of the worst decisions or the worst moments. About twenty percent of the people seem to want to act like LCPS is a, just a horrible school system where, you know, there are fires and, and raids and people are running rampant and it's just, it's just a mess. And about twenty percent of people wanna act like LCPS is perfection. And the truth is, neither one of those things are true. And, and I think probably sixty percent of the people, most of the people in the county, realize that LCPS as a school system over the past two years have made some poor decisions. And I didn't say mistakes, I said poor decisions. But you're not the sum total of your poor decisions. And it is okay for us to say that we have in many ways an excellent school system with a high graduation rate and kids who are thriving and doing very, very well. And we still have parents who do not feel like all the answers have, have been, all the questions have been asked, answered, and are worried about their kids' safety and mental health. Both of those things can survive at the same time. You can have a hero and still realize that your hero can make mistakes. In many ways, the people who work for LCPS every single day are heroes. But you know what? Superman has kryptonite. Wonder Woman, you take her bracelets off, she's just a really good woman. Heroes can make mistakes, and it's okay to say when you do. So we do have an excellent and caring school system, and our educators are bar done, top-notch. I'd place them against anybody in the country. But the school system has made mistakes. And it's okay to say that while still supporting the school system. And I think we've forgotten that. There's a balance, and we've gotten off balance. And if we do not get up, back on balance and do it very quickly, what I honestly believe is the best county in the country would tear ourselves apart. There is a balance. Lastly, I'm gonna ask a question of my school board colleagues. Please tell us how you want to communicate with you. Last year, we heard a lot of, the supervisors don't control the budget, they just give us the money. That is true. At the same time, I would feel it very disrespectful just to walk in my, on my boardroom and say, I'm gonna cut such and such a amount of money from the, from the budget without saying why. So you can't have it both ways. I, I would prefer telling you why I'm cutting money if I, if I, if I choose to do that. But then if I tell you why I'm cutting money, I kinda get blasted for, for, for telling you why. So I, I'm gonna ask you all to let, to let the supervisors know how you'd like us to handle that because we don't know. It's a hard year, it's a tough year. We will get through it because in the end, we really are an amazing, amazing county. Mr. Hempstreet, thank you.